Okay.
Hi, Kate. Okay. It is five thirty. Is everybody here? Just.
Yeah, here they come.
All right. I do. Okay.
Council, we are going to start the recording.
Okay. Council, good evening. Everyone, this is our city council study session for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. I call this meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is being held both virtually and in person. Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga. Councilmember Malinga.
She's just joined.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Thank you, Sean. Sean, do we have any announcements, reports, and presentations?
No, Chair, we do not.
Thank you. Tonight's agenda item for council discussion begins with ordinance number six eight four eight. Let's please welcome Director Tate.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I believe it's going to be Jen Francis.
No, actually, if I could chime in. Well, good evening, Council. Good evening, Deputy Mayor. Turn my video off just because I am out of town right now and I don't have my virtual background. So, and I'm going to be real quick anyway. I'm here tonight to introduce Tina Chris, our business license program coordinator. And she's going to provide a brief presentation over the ordinance. But just real quick, since Tina hasn't been before council, this council before, I just wanted to mention that Tina has been with the city for about fifteen years, has worked in multiple departments, and currently serves as the business license program coordinator. And that means that she oversees and facilitates the multi-department effort to review the approximately seven hundred or so new business license applications that are submitted to the city each year. She's also responsible for overseeing the annual process of our forty-eight hundred business license renewals each year and the implementation of Title V of the Auburn City Code, which is the set of business license regulations that have been adopted by city council. So tonight Tina is going to provide an overview of a series of code changes that are designed to make it easier for food trucks and mobile vendors to operate within Auburn. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tina.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council, and Mayor. Tina Chris, Business License Program Coordinator. I am excited to be here tonight to provide a brief presentation on draft ordinance number six eight four eight. If adopted, ordinance, the ordinance would add section five point two zero point two six oh to Auburn City Code, allowing the regulation and licensing of mobile vendors and food truck regulations. Prior to my presentation, if we could, if I could request all questions be held until the end of the presentation, that would be great. To begin, I'd like to direct your attention to the materials beginning on page three of your packet. So ordinance number six eight four eight seeks to add new section five point two zero point two six oh to the city's business license code. The addition seeks to streamline the process in manner of the city regulations and how the city regulates mobile vendors and food truck activities. Currently, the process regulating these activities is costly and time-consuming because the current regulations are processed through a temporary use permit zoning code. In addition to reducing the cost and time to begin operations, ordinance number six eight four eight provides additional options for short-term business activities. Those options previously did not exist in the sense that we could that a business could operate in a short time period without the temporary use permit. Ordinance number six eight four eight also provides direction to the public so that they can review those regulations a little easier. This is a very brief presentation to you. We certainly, I am completed with that, but open to any questions you may have. So if any.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Tina. That's really helpful. I was just wondering, so the revenue that would be generated for the city, is that mostly just the licensing fee, or are there local taxes?
So the licensing fee is only for those, those food truck or mobile vendors that are operating longer than three days in a specific site or longer than ten days in a three hundred and sixty-five day period, just to clarify for you. If, and this gets, this expands in that if a right-of-way use permit is required, there would be some costs associated with that. And so a business license fee, in addition to any right-of-way use permit, if required, would be additional costs. There are no taxes associated with that.
If I can add one thing real quick, too, it's just that when we collect a temporary use permit, we collect what? Kind of a barrier for a lot of food trucks or vendors to operate for events for, say, they're going to come to the farmer's market. Paying three hundred dollars to obtain a temporary use permit is an expensive fee, and it drives vendors away. The business license reduces that fee to a third of that. And in terms of the tax collection part of it, there still is, depending upon what product is being sold and what sales tax is generated, in theory, point of sale is how taxes are generated. So if there is an activity that's occurring within Auburn, Auburn should collect the sales tax.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions? Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was going to ask about the section under section A dot one for definitions. I was curious if it would be possible to add language for cooler and table into that line of this. For the main reason, I think you'll often see where people are maybe selling just drinks out of a cooler, water out of a cooler is a pretty common use case. I know it notes display, but I think it might be helpful to specify that language. And then I was also curious about instances where you thought blanket or round covering might be used.
Certainly, we can add that language to those, the definition we have. We certainly can add that.
And I think that because we're proposing to come back to city council for action on March twenty first, we've got a little, a few moments, I think. Sometimes it's a really quick turnaround if we're asking to bring an ordinance to next week's council meeting. So we definitely have the time to include those concepts, and I think those are great ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Thank you, Deputy Jay Raj. Tina or Jeff, these individuals that get their license, do they also, are they also required to have a food handling permit?
So one of, one of the requirements for any of these food truck or mobile vendors is that they're required to comply with the state or county health regulations. So included in that would be food handlers permits.
Okay, are they required to post them where the people can see that they have those cards? Or they, they're up to code?
So one of the things we do through the process of license, should they be required and not exempt, would be to have those in place. The city actually asks for a copy of those. Short of that, I would have to get back with you and respond to you to let you know how the counties require that, if it's posted or just accessed in the truck or the mobile unit.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Chair.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tina, I'm sorry, I just wanted to get back to my first question. So you, we anticipate then that there will be a number of unlicensed mobile food vendors, whatever. Is that, that's correct, right?
It's a possibility if they're short-term, which means under ten days in three hundred and sixty-five days in a specific location and not more than three days in a specific site, three days in a row. That's correct.
Okay, and but is there any way that we track the existence or mobility of the vendors who don't get a license?
Sure, that's a great question. I'm going to ask Jeff to go ahead and assist me with this question.
Yeah, sure. So it's similar in concept to how we track RVs, where people want to, you know, say you have a family member or a friend coming to your property. They come in an RV. We don't require you to obtain a license, but there is a clock that starts. So do we know when people arrive? Not necessarily. Are we going to know, are we going to be tracking each food truck that's operating within the city of Auburn each year? No. But we do have, one, a strong connection with the county in terms of their licensing protocols and where they're based out of and where they set up. And two, we'll know, I mean, most of the food truck operators and through the Food Truck Operator Association, we'll be able to proactively inform food truck operators and vendors of what the requirements are. And just like RVs, these things get reported. There are lots of people that will report if they see activity occurring. And that does trigger a clock for sure. So, I mean, if a food truck gets set up in a certain location and it's there for two or three days, I mean, what we're trying to create is a scenario where, again, the farmer's market or Pet Palooza or something like that, or Boeheim or Multi-Care, where they have events for their employees, we want to make it as easy as possible for them to show up for that one day or three-day event. And then they move on to another location after that. That's their business model. They don't stay in one location. But we do have vendors that do end up setting up at a gas station. That seems to be a real common location for a vendor to set up. We know when that's happening, and once they trigger that, that, that ten-day or that three-day trigger, they get treated differently because they have to get a license. And we don't want to make sure, we don't want to have them be treated in a way that's inequitable towards restaurants that are in brick-and-mortar locations. So we want to make sure that once they get past that ten-day, they start, you know, there are more licensing requirements, there are more zoning requirements, things of that nature in order to establish yourself more permanently. And those are really easy to identify and find because they're in high-profile locations.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There was just one other point of feedback I was going to ask for your team to consider making, Jeff, which is looking at the pages we have that give kind of the breakdown for the different paths of operating, whether a organ, whether a company would be, or a vendor would be exempt or not, is pretty heady. I thought it might be a wonderful item if you guys have bandwidth to consider doing like a more of a friendly visual flow chart. So if we're providing that to vendors, if we're providing that to the public or people who are interested in vending, being entrepreneurs, that's a little bit easier of a visual path of, you know, more or less days, go this route, more, more, go this route, just to make sure that they feel confident that they're not missing any of the different permits that we've talked about, whether that's, you know, this particular business license, whether that's a temporary use permit, whether it's a special event permit. I think if we had a bit of a visual flow chart to help our vendors follow and get to that, it might be easier, especially if we are looking to expand with groups that maybe English isn't a first language, so.
That's a great idea, and thank you for that request.
And I think that one of the things, good, bad, or indifferent, one of the things that we tend to do is develop those materials after council adopts an ordinance because they are a little bit time-consuming, but they're super meaningful. So if council takes action on an ordinance like this, it's definitely in our interest to develop something that's more visual, more, more graphic, more color, more engaging, easier to understand. Get it on our webpage, get it out to the Food Truck Association and other locations as well.
Right, sounds like you're on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One last question. So the vendors can vend anything, right? Like they, they could sell stuffed animals or T-shirts or cigarettes?
I mean, there, there is, when you look at the definition of mobile vendor, you'll see examples. And it is intended to be very inclusive. I mean, there are other types of products that have other layers of regulations that are probably more challenging to set up in a mobile vending situation, whether that's alcohol, tobacco, you know, marijuana, and the list is longer than that. But for, essentially for durable goods and for food is what this is designed to, to be welcoming to.
Okay, because yeah, I see food and I see beverages and/or goods. And it just seems like goods is like, well, that's anything practically.
Is that, okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
I would just comment for Councilmember Sterns. I think if you look at section B four, if you had something that was regulated for sale, such as cigarettes or alcohol, that it would be applicable to the federal, state, county requirements, including state and county health department regulations. So I think the coverage or the exception cases that you're talking about might be excluded there. And Director Tate, can confirm what that assumption is correct or not?
I think that's, that's why we want that catch-all in there because we know those other layers of government and regulatory authority are important to highlight so that it doesn't feel like or seem like there are, there are gaps in the system or loopholes.
Councilmember Sterns, you had your hand up. Did you want to ask a question? Okay. Council, is there any other questions? If not, Director Tate and Tina Chris, we thank you very much for the presentation you had. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an annual update from the Auburn Municipal Airport Advisory Board. And that is being, is, the presentation is going to be made by Director Gao.
All right, good evening. So for the record, Ingrid Gao, Public Works Director. And I'm actually going to hand this off to Tim Mencanides, who is our airport manager, and to Deanna Clark, who is our board chair, as they give you an update for what we've done over the past year and what's coming in the next year. So with that, Tim, you want to go ahead?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Ingrid, and good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. As part of the airport update, annual update, we provide an update to the council. And I will be saying where we've been in this past two thousand twenty-one. And Deanna, our AAB Chair, will be saying, will be telling the council where we're going in twenty-two. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully everyone can see that now.
Yes, we.
Thank you, Ingrid. Okay, so two thousand twenty-one, we had a lot of accomplishments in twenty-one, despite challenges with COVID and in other areas. One of the biggest accomplishments was almost a two-year process. And council may recall, at the end of twenty-one, we came to council to update the city code and airport zoning regulations. That was, hadn't been done in almost twenty years. So we updated those. And in earlier in the year, we also completed specific board procedures and standards. And we also installed airport improvements to airport wayfinding. We installed some signs to promote some of our tenants and provide better exposure to the airport tenants, especially for pilots who fly in and are unsure of where to go. We completed stormwater improvements on the north end of the airport. They, we had some flooding issues and some efficiency issues at the north end and improved the area, increased capacity and better flow for that. And we also upgraded our self-serve fuel system. The airport and airport staff are actually in charge and manage the fuel system at the airport. And as part of that, we upgraded and improved efficiencies for loading fuel and then painted the tank and have improved aesthetics. I dare say we have the, our fuel distributor says we have the nicest fuel system in the area, and it's a model for other airports. The feel-good story of the year, and we just accomplished this afternoon, Mayor and Ingrid came and attended our award of the Food Drive Trophy. So there's a traveling trophy and there's an annual fall food drive between airports. And we at Auburn won the food drive for the most food and most weight donated to our local food bank. We came in just under five thousand pounds and essentially blew the competition out of the water. I think the next airport was Bremerton, and they had less than a thousand pounds. So it was really exciting to have our airport community come together. We had a couple, we had four key tenants donate thousands of dollars of worth of of food and going out and purchase food and donate. We made multiple trips. We established and had a nice relationship, got well acquainted with the food bank and their staff. And then last but not least, you'll see a picture here of Ryan Hubbard and myself and our USDA representative. Ryan specifically was recognized for what he has done with the wildlife management of the airport to make the airport safer in, in the wildlife management of the airport. And he was recognized at a regional conference for what we've done. So with that, I'm going to pass the, on to Deanna on what we're looking ahead to do this year.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to briefly take, take you through our work plan that we have for two thousand twenty-two. This is something that we do every year. We develop a work plan so we can focus our work and also make sure that we are in alignment with city council established goals and priorities, also with the resources that are available and the department, the public works department, their priorities as well. So what we have on the docket for two thousand twenty-two is our key results area one dash one. That's the continued hangar development. You'll see down at the very, in the purple, in the very bottom of that picture on the right-hand side, that's the area that we have focused for developing new hangers. We will be working with a contracted company to do that. K R A one dash three is the middle ramp development, and that is to support the airport office, improve access and parking. And also, we're going to seek partnerships for development of space for additional business use in that area. The K R A two dash two is the annual review of our two thousand twenty-two airport marketing focus. We take a look at this annually. It helps us understand what are the needs of the airport. The next one is airport rules and regulations update. This is a revision. We've been working on this. We've expected to be completed in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. Additionally, we have the airport minimum standards. Again, this will be completed around first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. And then a couple of things that we have on our plate that we do annually, and that is our annual fee updates, our annual capital improvement plan updates, annual, excuse me, our airport board composition review, and of course, our airport annual work plan for the following year, two thousand twenty-three. That's what we have. Any questions?
Council, any questions? Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Yes, I have one, Diana. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. On the adding more stalls, how many are we looking to add there? Hangers?
For the south end, it'd be a row of seventeen, seventeen hangers, smaller hangers for the individual smaller aircraft, and then six bigger hangers that could fit multiple aircraft or fit a business.
Okay, and then about how much fuel do we, do we, you know, provide for our individuals that fly in?
We, we sell approximately, so council may recall, the switch from a private management company to city staff, my staff, happened three years ago, and since then, we're averaging about a hundred thousand gallons a year.
Wow, that's pretty good. And congratulations on winning the food drive.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Councilmember Brown. You're muted.
At least once a day. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Yes, Tim, I was curious about the annual fee. How do we compete with other regional municipal-type airports?
So I assume you're asking regarding the annual fee that Deanna referred to in our annual fee update. It's varied. We have multiple lines of revenue for to determine. We have a land lease, and so our land leases, so those would be that we strictly lease the land, and we have people build hangers or building on top of them. That is appraised. Every five years, a professional praiser comes in and appraises the land and does it multiple because airports are such a unique animal, though. They'll, they'll compare fee simple land, but also just what other airports are charging and try to come up with, with, will come up with a rate that then we institute. And then the remaining four years is on a CPI basis. For the hangars that we specifically own and rent, we, we compare to the other airports. And it's also multi-tiered in that we compare it to the other airports, but then also see where CPI is. And typically, we just do a CPI adjustment if it's in line with the other airports. And that's the basic plan for those.
So just to really, what I was trying to get at is the, the amount that we charge is, is that a sensitive area in terms of us retaining tenants or gaining or losing tenants?
I, I believe it, it's, it's fair. It's, the tenants, this was something that was instituted before our staff came on, and the tenants are used to an annual update. We try, I, I think we've demonstrated to them that appraisal I mentioned on the land lease came in and they wanted, they suggested a 40% increase. And we didn't feel like that was fair for, for a tenant to take on in one year. So we broke that out. And I think demonstrating that has gone a long ways in goodwill to our tenants. It hasn't been sensitive. The, there is a huge demand for hangars and for space in the entire Puget Sound area. So it's, it, it's, has been, it hasn't been an issue for the past three years.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think probably following on the heels of where you might have been going with that last comment, I was going to ask how the new count of hangars that are being developed, how's that going to impact the current waiting list for space at the airport?
We're hoping it, we're hoping it makes an impact and takes some, some names off the list. It, it should. Obviously, with new construction, we have older hangars. We have hangars that were built in 1970. We have hangars that were built in 2000. We're going to have brand-new construction at higher rates. But there is a market for that. I have no doubt we will fill it. So those hangars won't be built by a project led by the airport. It will be a land lease. So it will depend on the owner of the hangars, how they want to fill them. We're hoping we can manage those hangars and be able to take that directly from our waitlist, which is currently 15 years for enclosed hangars, if you were to try to get on it today. So that, but ultimately, it's up to, we're hoping to form a partnership with the developer. But they could go their own route and fill it their own way if they wanted to.
Okay. So we're hoping that'll bring down our waiting list, but not necessarily guaranteed.
Yeah. And if it doesn't, you know, it will probably, it just wouldn't be directly off of our waitlist. I'm sure there will be people that are on our waitlist that will be interested in those hangars regardless.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Tim. I was wondering, how many planes are based or, you know, call Auburn Airport home?
We, we have 330 base aircraft.
Okay. And then does the plan envision that growing? Or we're sort of just waiting for more hangar space?
Yeah, with, with the increased hangar space, we would anticipate more base aircraft. And honestly, as Boeing Field and some of our friends to the north build out and can no longer cater to smaller general aviation aircraft, they're coming, they're, they're coming to us because we're the closest airport to the Seattle metropolitan area.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll be quiet now and ask a question.
Council, any more, any other questions? You got one more question?
I do.
I thought you said you were going to be quiet.
Well, I was waiting for someone else to jump in. I didn't want to go boom, 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 boom. But if you'll indulge me, I have one more question. So the, the number of spaces that we have, is that directly correlated to the number of takeoffs and landings?
It can. So we do not have a control tower at our airport. And so figuring out that number, we call them operations number. And a takeoff is one operation, a landing is one operation. We have one of the highest numbers in the state, that 140,000 annually. But that was, that's put into an, just an algorithm, you could say. It's a multiple factor. So I said, a control tower, you have a guy actually clicking something and has a very accurate number. Since we don't have that, we, we put into account in factoring that number, base aircraft. And then you have a lot of itinerant aircraft, aircraft that aren't based here that come here. And we, we frankly have a lot of those. I would say our number one operating aircraft is a helicopter that comes off of Boeing Field. They're coming out of those controlled airports from Renton and Boeing, and they want to come to an airport that has an uncontrolled airport to get that practice and training for student pilots. So we get a lot of Renton traffic that needs that. And I would say almost operationally, why, operational-wise, we, over 50% of our operations are from non-based aircraft.
Oh, wow. Well, that's, it sounds like we have quite a gem. Thank you.
Council, any other questions? If not, Tim, thank you very much. Deanna, thank you very much. And. Councilmember Baldwin, raise your hand. Councilmember Baldwin.
Sorry, I had one last one that I thought of at the last minute. Have we, with Auburn Airport, ever hosted like the vintage air shows or the rodeos where folks travel in? And it's kind of like a car show, but for planes?
Like a fly-in? And we currently have multiple events. One event, Mayor can relate to this because I told her my number one job today is to demonstrate the economic impact and how important the airport is in the community. So then, our biggest event in my book is our Airport Tenant Day. And this isn't so much as a showcase of vintage aircraft. It's to get the community out to our airport and demonstrate how important it is. And also, the, the hub of that, the, the key piece of that event is our Young Eagles event. So the Experimental Aircraft Association has a Young Eagles event. 15% of all pilots get their first ride in, at a Young Eagles event or in a Young Eagles ride. So individual pilots come out and essentially give rides to kids. And that's what this event is about. Now, then, then we get, you speak about food trucks and other things. We just make it, we get the police and fire, any kind of community asset we can get out to the airport to make it really just a fun, free kids' community day that increases airports' awareness, probably creates a couple of pilots at the least, maybe more, and interest in aviation and buy-in and support for the airport. It's not just a place that makes noise. It's actually a place that, where economic activity starts and is a generator. So it's fun. You can probably sense my passion about it. I, I love the event. I think that's just, that's the hub of what we do in general aviation and what we do at an airport like ours. So we have that event, and we will try to get tenants to bring out their aircraft and showcase their aircraft. And we'll have helicopter rides for a fee and other like vintage biplane rides. I spoke to a guy yesterday about coming out to that event. But then the kids, the kids get the free airplane rides, no fee. So there's that. And then we also have a tenant day that is just for our tenants, where we'll lower the price of fuel, have a barbecue, have an airplane washing and things of that, that sort. I wish we could have an airshow and things of that, that nature, like aerial demonstrations. But it's, it's very difficult. We are so close to Sea Tack and Boeing Field and Renton and their airspace. And our runway isn't big, that really those two events that I listed fits our airport well.
Nice. And then.
You. Well, you stole the words out of my mouth. July 9th is our Auburn Airport Day. And the council will be invited. I know Councilmember Begit's been out there before. And, and then the tenant day is August 13th. So Ingrid always is great about reminding me to make sure I get the invite out to everyone. So you'll, should be seeing those. We have the flyers on those already. They're on our website on the front page. And we, we've only been able to have one since our staff started here. And it was an overwhelming success. I think we flew over 100 kids. There was almost 1,000 community members, and then COVID hit. So we were hoping to only build off of that. But I still think, I, I still think we'll have an even bigger event and even greater attendance this year if we're allowed to have it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing.
Council, any other questions? That's the case. Tim, Deanna, and Director Gao, thank you very much. And we're moving into photo enforcement, school zone safety. And that is going to be headed up by Director Gao again.
Good evening. So we actually had a conversation about this two weeks ago at the study session, but there were some questions in that presentation. So we thought, before we bring that back for discussion, that we would actually bring back some more discussion with you and hopefully get all of your questions answered. So I'm going to hand this off to Cecile Malik, who is our Senior Transportation Planner, who's going to go through a quick presentation with you and then open it up to questions. Cecile?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember. Let me start by apologizing. My virtual background option disappeared. So you get to see my office. Let me share my screen. All right. Can you confirm that you can see my screen and hear me? All right, perfect. Having technical difficulties this evening, so let's hope everything else goes well. All right. So as Ingrid mentioned, this is a follow-up discussion on the last study session. As a reminder, the discussion on photo enforcement started in October of 2020 when we heard support from several council members about the school zone safety cameras, after which time we worked on identifying a vendor and we negotiated a contract that ensured that this program would be at no cost to the city, which is where we are today. So some of the follow-up discussion items will be going over tonight. Are the school zone locations, crash history, traffic calming approaches, the previous and the currently proposed photo enforcement program, the preliminary study results, and then the next steps after tonight's presentation. So on page 30 of your packet, you will find a series of maps. These maps show the location of the school zones that currently have flashing beacons. They also show the speed limits of the roadways when the flashing beacons are not active and the crash history over a 10-year period. The crash history that you will see are limited to the crashes that happen while the flashing beacons were active. So only the school zone time when the speed limit was reduced to 20 mile per hour. So here's a closer look at the map. You have a legend at the bottom of the maps that shows the speed limits for the roadways that have a speed limit at 30 miles per hour or higher. And you will notice that the color red is the most frequent, which is the 35 mile per hour speed limit. You'll also see an icon for the school zone flashes that you will find on your map and the collisions with a different color when the collisions involved a pedestrian or a cyclist. And again, this is only data for, for the times where the speed limit was reduced to 25, to 20 miles per hour. So while the children are walking to and from school. What we found is that there were 93 crashes, nine of which included pedestrians or cyclists, and 26 of which include, resulted in an injury. So if implemented, the photo enforcement program will be transparent. Therefore, each year, we will be publishing an annual report that will show all the crashes in the school zones and the number of infractions issued for each school zone. And we will have dedicated webpage on this, on the website for that purpose. And we cannot say this enough. This is a proven safety improvement encouraged by the state's Target Zero Plan. It is encouraged by the Federal Highway Administration Safe System Approach. And it is really successful in reducing speeding in school zones. It is an effective program that improves student safety while they're walking to and from school. So we've been working with the vendor. And the vendor collected some data over two days during the active school, the active schools on time. So when the flashers were active to indicate that the speed limit was reduced to 20 miles an hour. The data collected the number of vehicles that were driving at or above 26 mile per hour in the 20 mile per hour school zone. What we found was that both school zones had violations. And the percentage of vehicles traveling at or above 26 mile per hour varied from 7% to 45%. So almost, in some areas, almost half of the cars were exceeding that speed during the school zone, limited time. And all the school zone that we evaluated are on collector or arterial streets, so they were not on local residential streets. But over the two days' time, just during the time of the limited speed in the school zones, we found over 5,000 vehicles that were speeding at 26 mile per hour or above. Sorry. So I just wanted to point that this is only one point of data that's going to be used in the evaluation of, of this school zone that could be considered for the cameras. It's not all the information considered, but it's one piece of it. The, we haven't completed the final analysis, and we have not yet selected where the cameras will be placed to remove forward with this program. So in the last council meeting, there were questions about other traffic calming approaches. So why wouldn't we consider other physical improvements to slow vehicles down? So the current traffic calming program that was adopted in December of 2021 is for non-artificial residential streets, so local residential streets in neighborhoods. But most of these school zones are along streets that are either collector or arterial streets with speed limits at or above 30 miles per hour, most of them being at 35 miles per hour. So these are streets intended to carry more traffic. So for these reasons, many of the treatments we would use on residential roadways would not be appropriate for these higher classified streets. So for example, the speed cushions are intended to slow cars down to 25 miles per hour. The target speed for school zones is 20 mile per hour, but only while the school zone is active. But the speed cushions will be in place all the time, which will cause, potentially cause un-motived driver behaviors because they will be frustrated that they're driving on a 35 mile per hour road. And then they're slowed down to 25 mile per hour or less around. And then they're slowed down to twenty-five mile per hour or less around the clock, um, even when it's not needed because it's outside of the school time. Then there's other approaches, raised intersections, risk crosswalks, traffic circles, narrow lanes. All these are also very expensive physical improvements that we don't have the budget for. They can range from fifty thousand to the million dollar range for the project. Um, and then all these physical improvements also create a physical barrier to the traffic. So they would need additional considerations for emergency vehicles, for the school buses, for the snowprose. And really, ultimately, we need to reduce the speed for a short period of time, just when the children are walking to and from school. The bolt outs, um, they've been incorporated in a lot of the projects for the school rebuilds. And they help some, they especially help in shortening the crossing distance and making the pedestrians more visible. So when the kids are waiting to cross the street, they are more visible than if they sit back on the sidewalk because the bolt outs bring them forward and protect them. But that's also a costly improvement. And then uh, we have uh, speed feedback signs and these work temporarily, but over time they may not have that same effect in slowing down traffic. It's more of an educational uh, improvement that tell people what their speed are, but it doesn't for them to change their behavior. It's just um, helping them understand how fast they're going so that they can think, oh man, I'm going too fast. I should slow down. But not everybody makes that choice clearly. So the intent of the safety camera in the school zone is to change the driver behavior to reduce the driving speed to twenty mile per hour, but only during the school's on time. So in the morning, in the evening, on the school week, not on the weekend, not in the summer breaks, not at night. Um, and then the rest of the time will need to, will need the street tourism to resume being used as the intended. So carrying more traffic, moving cars across the town uh, out of the neighborhoods to the larger streets. So, moving on, let's talk about the previous program. Um, and the the concerns raised about the previous program that was in place before and mainly uh, some questions we heard were the cost questions. So the previous program was in place from two thousand six to two thousand fourteen. Uh, the cost per camera varied from about four thousand eight hundred to six thousand eight hundred dollars per camera per month, paid for twelve months of the year. So every single month, whether the schools were in session or not, whether the cameras were active or not. The total revenue collected was about six point seven million dollars over that time. And the total payments sent to the vendor for their service was about five point one million dollars, which gave the city an next excess revenue of one point six million dollar. So what happened? Why was there this feeling of spending more than was generated? Well, what happened is that the city had forecasted excess revenues in the budget to fund other programs. But over time, with the achieved better compliance and the revenues being less than forecasted, um, the, the funds had been or had already been spent in those programs, but we did not receive the revenues we expected to receive. And so um, so in the end, it seemed like we ended up short in money. Well, in fact, it was just about how the budgeting happens. And another thing um, that um, impacted the the previous program is that it did not account for the cost for the city to administer the program and to process the infraction because there is a cost in the court. There's a cost for the officers to review. There's all this internal cost to get the program going. Uh, and that wasn't considered at that time, but it was the first try at this program. So from all of these, we've learned how to manage this program better so we can prevent the situation from happening again. So how are we going to do that? So the new program and the contract is based on a cost-neutral approach. So what that means, that no matter what, it will be at no cost to the city. We are not spending any money out of the city budget for this program, regardless of what happens. So on page thirty-seven of your packet, you will find the contract uh, that is being proposed. And section four point five, the flexible payment plan, starts page forty and forty uh, um, they are both on page, over page forty and forty-one of your packet. And these are the cost-neutral provisions. So I'm going to walk you through this process. And I'm sorry, it's going to be a lot, but then the next slide is going to give you a visual example and I hope it's going to make sense. So with this new contract, with this new vendor, the cost per camera per month is about four thousand dollars. That is to be paid ten months per year, only when the school are in session. Um, so we're not charged for the times that there is no school and the cameras are turned off. Then when we collect on the infractions that are issued, twenty-five percent of the collected amount is set aside to cover the city's cost to administer the program. Seventy-five percent, um, so the other seventy-five percent is paid to the vendor up to the monthly fee. So when the monthly revenues are below the vendor cost, we'll give partial payment to the vendor. When the monthly revenues exceed the cost, then we will pay the vendor any missing payment up to their cost. And then at the end of each twelve-month period, we will go through the process of an annual reconciliation, where we're going to review the total revenues received against the total cost. We'll still make sure we've kept our twenty-five percent for internal costs. If the remaining revenues exceed the vendor cost, then the city will pay the outstanding cost for the year to the vendor. If the remaining revenues are less than the vendor's cost, the city will pay up to the revenue amount received. Any excess revenue? Any of the excess revenue um, that are available will then um, be freed up at the end of the twelve-month period. So we'll see how much is there left, if any, at the end of the twelve months. We'll know exactly what we have. And then we can budget it for other purposes. And the vendor cannot claim additional payments once the year is reconciled, regardless of the future revenue collection. So, visual example. Um, because that was a lot. I apologize. It's really complex. But it's a good contract terms. So this is an example, assuming we have two cameras. And um, in this example, um, you can see as the compliance increase over time, the number of infractions decrease. And ultimately, that's our goal. We want to see the number of infraction decrease because what we really want to see is better compliance. But um, regardless of the number of infractions issued, we still are able to retain our costs and then we will pay the vendor up to the amount collected. Um, and then when we have net revenue, we can invest it after that reconciliation to um, to programs, but it cannot be, we cannot go back and and get any excess revenue that's been spent. I hope that makes sense. So, so we will definitely recommend that um, that the program excess revenue is not budgeted ahead of the annual reconciliation so that we'll know exactly how much we have uh, to then invest into other program and or projects. All right. So what are the next steps? On March seven, you'll be asked to consider resolution fifty-six fifty-three uh, to approve the proposed contract, which is included in your packet. Um, assuming the contract is approved and executed, we will work with the vendor to complete the study analysis and select the locations for the uh, school's on safety cameras. Um, the selected locations will be shared on the city webpage, which will be dedicated to sharing information about the program. And each location will have a signage to warn drivers that the school zone is photo enforced. Additionally, the first thirty days of the program is a warning period, which means that um, drivers that exceed the speed limit that would otherwise receive an infraction will only receive a warning for the first thirty days after that thirty-day warning period, which is an educational period for drivers to stay aware that there is photo enforcement. After these thirty days, then um, we'll start issuing infractions. So um, assuming all goes well, the, the program will begin in September because it will take time to get everything put in place. And then there's the summer vacation and we can start the school year on the right foot. And we'll stop sharing. And I am open for questions.
Thank you, Cecile. Um, Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Cecile. Um, I have like, yeah, I've got a whole, I've got three questions at least. And and maybe the the first one is the simplest. Um, where does the money that we collect go? Is that like just the general revenue that the city can spend anywhere chooses?
Um, yes. So you're talking about the excess revenue. Should we have any excess revenue? Where that revenue is invested will be a council decision. Uh, of course, we're hoping that uh, it will be reinvested in traffic safety improvement, but ultimately it will be a council decision. So during a budget process, once we have um, that number, it at the end of each twelve-month period, we'll go to council and say, we have this. This is what we're proposing, but it's really your decision where it will be, how it will be invested.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, I I have two more, but I'm willing to wait another round.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Cecile, you mentioned that uh, within the ten-year period, um, there was ninety-three crashes and nine pedestrians and twenty-six injuries. Um, where was the heaviest area? Which area do we see that there was more accidents than the other ones?
Um, I don't remember on top of my head, but it is in your packet. So in the maps, if you look at the close-up of the maps, each school zone will have a number with a circle around, and that's the number of accidents or crashes in that school zone in that period.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at that and I don't see any numbers.
Hang on. Let me check. Give me a moment and I will share my screen and I will show you an example.
And about, and I'll just very quickly with that, um, how, about, what time are these accidents? Is it uh, when the kids are leaving? Or are they mainly in the morning or in the, in the noon time? Um, what are our timeframes with these accidents?
So um, I, we didn't have time to go through the data to see other in the mornings or the afternoon. We just um, we ran a filter in the data to filter out the times that were outside of the morning and afternoon and um, taking up the weekends, taking up the vacation. And so this is the total during morning plus afternoon time uh, where the kids are walking to and from school. But we, we didn't have time uh, in the past week to look at each and every report to see exact all the details. And are you, am I sharing my screen with the map?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So these numbers right here, they, they tell you the total number of crashes.
Okay.
For each area. So they're kind of yellowish-orange color.
Okay, now I, now I see um, where the numbers are at. Okay, I, that's what I kind of wanted to know. It's about what time were these accidents and how many and which school had the most? Uh, just to give me an idea where we really have the, the speeders.
Right. And and the crashes, I mean, I don't know if they're all related to the speeders, but they are related to times when kids are going to and from school. And we do know that all of the school zones, all of the school zones have people that don't respect the limited twenty mile per hour. And we know that the faster the cars go and the more um, the more injuries and the more chances of the fatality we have. And we really want to prevent that. And we have to find a way to get people to um, to respect the lower speed limits in the school zones during the school's on time. And we don't have the number, we don't have um, the police force that would be needed to take the place of these cameras to just sit in the school zones every day, all of the school zones, to get people to um, to respect.
Thank you. I have one more question, but I'll, I'll pass my time.
If I could also add on to that, so whether the crashes are happening in the morning or the afternoon, they're happening during that time that that flashing beacon is operating. So it really doesn't matter whether it's morning or afternoon. We're looking at it holistically. So uh, that, that level of detail, one, is a lot of work to go through and pull that information out because that's not how we manage it in our data system. Um, but we really want to look at that overall uh, crash information in those zones, not just morning or afternoon.
I understand that, but for me to visualize it also, it would be nice to, to know how many, you know, at what time is our heaviest um, accidents and stuff like that. That's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Yeah, and I totally understand. Um, my only concern would be is most of these locations are running for about thirty minutes at a time. Um, so you're not necessarily going to be able to parse out the specific detail to that level without a significant amount of work for staff to go through and figure out actual information on that. That isn't going to necessarily lead to a criteria that we're going to use in that selection process. So we'll look at that overall picture and that's, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Councilmember Bob Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, thank you, Cecile, for a great comprehensive report. Uh, I really appreciate the fact that staff and Ingrid included the uh, the actual contract in this uh, these attachments. Uh, it gives, it gives one who has done contracts for many years a little perspective on, on what's included in the uh, the actual work that we're going to be approving. Uh, one question that I think may have been asked uh, at the last uh, study session where this was uh, shown, uh, was the fact that some of the previous uh, cameras seem to be left on a lot longer at different times than when the school was really being let out or when they should have been on. And I was just wondering if there were any uh, improvements in how those things, those timing, the timing of these uh, cameras are turned on and turned off uh, is incorporated in this.
Yes, so uh, definitely the cameras will be programmed to be activated at the same time as the schools on flashing beacons. Additionally, when an ID um, when the camera takes a picture and a video, the picture has to document that the flashing beacon was activated. Otherwise, it will not be admissible in court, so it will be discarded. So if for any reason the camera was activated a few minutes after the flashing beacon's been turned off and the speed limit returns to normal, these infractions would not be issued. They will be discarded and eliminated.
Right. Well, thank you. Right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. That takes care of my question.
Okay.
Thank you, Cecile.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so my question really falls in the area of what it's going to take for the city to provide overhead. So within the chart, and I realize that was just a sample with the two cameras, you know, at you, pardon me, as you get to year five, it winnows down to ten thousand dollars. Do we need to have any um new hires to provide support for evaluating the um images that are collected? Uh, I noticed that there was some information on retention policies. So can you walk through um what is covered by that overhead?
Right, so mainly the overhead is uh one, the court fee for processing the infraction. And then the time that the police officers need. And uh in previous discussion, so these overheads were calculated in talking with legal and with our police force, uh, we um, we work on how long it takes and who gets to review those infractions. So uh, my understanding was that typically it would be police officers that will do overtime uh that will spend some time in reviewing the infractions. So it's not new hires. And uh they are not obligated to do that, but they're usually, they like doing the overtime. So the cost, the twenty-five percent, so it really would be based on the number of infractions. If we have infraction, one infraction, then we get one court fee and we get one review period for the one infraction by the police officer. If we get a thousand, then thousand of the court fee and a thousand of that time period, and I don't remember exactly how much time, but it was all factored into that cost. And so in this calculation, we found that it was approximately twenty-five percent of the cost of that two hundred dollar ticket that went into covering the court fee and the time for the review. Uh, and I think it may have included a little bit of buffer. But I, we did that a couple of years ago in twenty twenty, so I don't remember all the specifics, but I think we were fairly conservative in that. Um, and then you had a question about the retention schedule. Um, and I think that retention schedule had to do with the remobility, keeping um specific data for a number of time before they could delete it. So we wouldn't be able to ask for it, but ultimately, if we were to discontinue this program, at some point, they will give us all of the data. So we would have uh all of the file of the data that was to be retained. And all the infraction information is sent to the court right away. So the pictures, um, the the documentation, the little, the short videos, it is all given over to the court as it happens, once we approve it. And so the court has their own uh retention period for those infractions.
Okay, so to clarify, uh, within the Exhibit E retention schedule, that's the retention period that ver immobility would keep it, but because it's passed over so quickly to the court system, that evidence, if you will, would be according to the court's retention policies, which may be long. Okay, and then um for that calculation that you had, uh, do you know uh time per evaluation, like time per photo? What estimate was used in that calculation?
I don't remember. I'm sorry. At some point.
Councilmember Baldwin, if I recall correctly, it was a matter of minutes for them to look at the infraction. They're basically just verifying the information on there and looking at the photos to ensure that it's a a true and correct uh infraction, because they have to physically look at it under the RCWs before they can issue that ticket. So um, so it's just, it's a matter of minutes. So there's quite a bit that can be done by the current police staff. Um, that's where uh when police looked at this based upon their experience from the previous round, they did not feel a need for new staff to be considered in this, but just made sure that we actually accounted for the time that they were spending doing that review.
Do we have any idea?
Councilmember Baldwin, I gotta cut you off. Councilmember Malanga.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um.
She froze up.
Usually when you put in cameras, um, it's just me. Am I, can you hear me?
Yeah, uh, try again.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, thank you. Um, usually when you have cameras, it um, it changes the behavior of the drivers because they get used to seeing them there. How long does that take for folks to start noticing the cameras?
So I I think.
We're not getting.
Start slowing down. Is that, how long does that usually take?
Okay, so if I if I heard the question correctly, I think the question.
Okay, disregard my question then.
Okay.
Um, councilmember Baldwin again. Actually, you know what? I'm sorry, uh, councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, Cecile, I I was, in your presentation, you talked about um that the cameras would be operational for ten months out of the year. And I I couldn't find that in the agreement. Um, and and I, you know, I guess I I have a little bit of, you you know, I'm coming from a an angle of privacy and and being transparent. And so I I'm hoping that's spelled out in the agreement rather than, you know, just sort of taking their word for it.
It is uh in the Exhibit A.
Okay.
Um, Exhibit A service fee schedule, it says the um the monthly fee is required to be paid for each month that schools are open. Exempting periods such as summer break and unforeseen events, the fee will be priority during times when the camera is not operat- operational.
Oh, okay. What what page is that on?
Um.
I I.
It's page twelve of the agreement.
Page forty-eight of your packet.
Thank you. And I think that is.
Right, yeah, it just says that um, you know, for for months that the schools are open, exempting such periods as summer break. I I just want to get it to be easier just to say ten months.
Well, it will be, but look at um COVIDs that closed the schools for longer periods. We wanted to make sure that was covered.
Right. Okay, for up to ten months.
Right. So I mean, let's say the school closes for an extra month during the year, we wouldn't be chartering that month either.
Right. Yeah, no, I I I'm I'm, again, I'm just worried that they'll say, well, you know what? There are all these events going on at uh, you you know, at at Dick Scoville Elementary, and so they were open, therefore we need to have these cameras running.
No, because the 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 school zone wouldn't be activated during that time, so there wouldn't be um a reason to activate the camera.
Right. Yeah, I'm I'm just, yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm a lawyer. So, you know, if you're not saying ten months, they're going to go for eleven.
Well, if if that can reassure you, our legal department looked at this agreement very closely and was very involved in the wording um of the terms.
I would also add that we, as the city, control when the flashers are turned on or not. So those cameras, if there, if a photo is issued, an infraction is issued without the cameras flashing, those are get immediately thrown out.
Thrown out by?
By the courts, because they cannot prove that there was an actual flasher operating at the time. So in that situation, the vendor would be hard pressed to prove uh that it was operational if we're the ones controlling the flashers.
No, okay, no, I I appreciate that. Thanks.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Okay, Ingrid or uh Cecile. Um, of these cameras, when they take the photo, are they just taking the photo of the license plate or can you see the person driving?
Just the license plate. So really, when the car, so there was the, um, I don't have it handy, but there was a graphic uh two weeks ago that kind of showed the car will pass the radar and pass the um the sign with the flashing beacon. And when that car passes those at the speed uh that triggers the camera that says, oh, this one is going too fast, then it starts, it turns on. So it's already the back of the car. And it will take a short clip that shows the speed from the back, and it will show two pictures. One picture of the car with the flasher that shows the that the light is activated, which is the proof that it was that limited twenty mile per hour time. And then another picture, that's a close-up of the license plate. And then people can go on the website and review this information as well, but it uh it cannot show anybody, any driver.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is because I did receive, I did get a a ticket going through a speed zone, a school zone, going three miles faster. And uh when I went to court, um, they were looking for my husband because they go by the registration, uh whoever the car's registered to.
Right.
And so when I went up, the judge called my husband's name. I went up and he says, is Mr. Manuel with you? And I go, no, I am um his wife. And he says, well, we need him to be here. And I go, well, I was the driver. And he goes, he wasn't the driver. And he, and I go, no, I was the driver. He goes, well, we can't citeate you because the vehicle's under his name. And I told him, but I was the driver and I'm willing to pay the fine. And he goes, well, this is the first. So I heard that this is what's happening in Kent. And so I was just wondering, how are we in our city going to uh make sure that the driver, people are honest? You know, because when they'll throw it out of court like Ingrid said. So I was just, wanted to use that as an example because my ticket was going to be two hundred and twenty-five dollars and he cut it in half. So because I was honest. So I just wanted to know.
A single example. I can't think of a single example where I've heard that in court. You're the most honest person I've ever heard of in my entire life. Every single example I've ever heard of are people coming in and saying, I wasn't the driver, when you know they probably were. Because all they have to do to defeat the ticket is to say that they are not the driver and you can't take a picture of their face or anything like that. If they say that under oath, then that's the end of it, under state law. Some courts and some judges um will go a step further and say, well, tell me who was. But there's really no legal authority for that next question. It's just if they weren't, and that's the end of it. Your your example was, is definitely out of the ordinary. You're you're overly honest to a fault.
True. Okay, I just was wondering what type of our cameras, if our cameras was going to take the front or the back, just like the other ones.
Yeah, program works, we're not allowed to take that photo of the actual driver and how the tickets are issued. So we follow what the state law allows in what those tickets can issue. And you're right, there's a, there's a risk that there will be those that will say, it wasn't me, and get the tickets thrown out. But that is taken into account in how we written the contract. And especially why we've asked for it to be cost neutral. So if it gets to a point where the revenue is not coming in to pay that cost, we only pay what we've received in revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, so coming back to my earlier questions, for the program, is there typically more than one camera at a school or in those zones? Because we have twenty-six school zones. So do we have a rough estimate that that might be twenty-six cameras or forty-two or fifty-two rather?
Right, no, we're not going to put one in every school zone. Uh, so we'll we'll go through the evaluation process and analysis of different pieces of data to um to identify which school zones will benefit from this um, from this program. Some school zones may have a camera for one direction and some may have one in each direction. So it would be two cameras. Uh, there's also considerations on, you know, is there a place that you can actually put a camera in that school zone in the right location to go with that flashing beacon or not? Um, so sometimes you can do it in one direction, sometimes in both directions. But we're not planning on putting just cameras all over the place. Only those locations that uh indicate that they would most benefit from the program, which then will free up our police officials, the traffic can is to go um around the other school zones when they can, or focus and enforcement in other places.
Okay, my main question was whether the cameras operated in one direction or whether they were bidirectional.
No, they only operate in one direction. So they're just located roughly thirty feet, if I remember, from the school's on flasher, so that they can uh pick up the cars and then take a picture of that flasher. So because they are so far away in the different direction, so each camera will only go one way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, just sort of following up on the last question I had. Um, again, just sort of thinking about privacy and all that and and being transparent. Is there, is there a a limit to the amount of cameras that um uh we could could be installed? And is that something that's in the agreement?
Um, there's no limit, but we we want to be thoughtful about the placement of those cameras. So like, like I just said, um, we're not planning on putting them everywhere. Uh, we we want to go through a careful analysis process to find out which school zones would actually benefit from the programs. For example, we have some school zones on small residential streets. We definitely, that are limited at twenty-five miles per hour. This is not an area that would benefit as much as a school zone that is located on an arterial street that's going thirty-five mile per hour where people are reluctant to slow down for the children because they're in a hurry or whatever the reason. Well, they need a little extra reminder of that, no, this is the school zone, you need to slow down during this time. And um, and that's usually effective.
Uh, Councilmember Sterns, I'll just add one thing on, I know you've been uh concerned about privacy. Uh, privacy is really protected two ways. One is Cecile's already mentioned about the camera. Doesn't show faces and and any useful images that could identify individuals, but uh, the law on this also precludes, strictly precludes law enforcement prosecutors, anyone involved from using any of the personally identifying data for any other purpose other than enforcing these infractions in court. So you can't transfer this information and apply it to another purpose. Um, and the court's only supposed to retain the information as as long as needed to enforce the the infractions and 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 stuff like that. So this is not data that's going to be exposed to the public. It's not open to the public. Um, and it's only used for this limited purpose.
Oh, tha- thank you so much. That that is really helpful. Yeah, I I'm just thinking, you know, the 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 revenue is based on then on a camera, you know, per camera. So my my sense is that, you know, from the the corporate standpoint, they have an interest in having as many cameras as possible. And uh, so that that's what I was thinking about. Um, thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, with this contract, had we considered uh breaking it into two phases? So maybe doing just an initial assessment phase and then evaluating the results for the implementation?
I'm not sure I understand your question. I'm sorry.
But sure, what you're looking for is is, did we want to do a first phase where we pay them to do the assessment and do the analysis and figure out the locations and then come back and do the contract for them to actually install the cameras? So unfortunately, that would actually be a cost to the city for the first phase because there's no go through and to do this second phase of that. Uh, and what we had heard when we discussed this with council back in October of twenty twenty, I think it was, we had heard um some strong support from the camp, the the various council members that were part of the council at that time, that they did want to come back and at least consider the school zone flasher. So that's not typically how these contracts are done. So it wasn't a consideration for this because we want to go through and figure out locations. In addition, when we go and we actually do that implementation, there's some flexibility written into that contract that allows us to one, either move cameras if they're starting to actually get enough compliance that it's not an appropriate place for a camera to to remain. So we can move it to another location where maybe we are having some compliance issues. So we can move it to another location where maybe we are having some compliance issues. Uh, as well as we can add if we want to, if we're seeing compliance issues, especially as we've got some new schools that are coming in as well. So we wanted flexibility for what we need to do. So we needed that analysis to be part of their contract for the long term anyway, for those future potential locations that might be considered at a later date. Does that help?
It does. If we had simply paid for the assessment upfront, do you have an idea of what that cost would have been?
Uh, I don't remember if they gave us a cost of what that assessment is, but that's basically built into what their overall costs are in getting the program going. So I don't know that I have that number.
Okay.
Mayor Bakas.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a reminder that the Auburn School District is one hundred percent supportive and have their letter of support will be coming shortly. But they have asked for this assistance. Principals at schools. Many of the administrators have asked for the assistance of the city to to help with the safety in their school zones. So just please keep that in mind that this is first and foremost always going to be an issue of safety.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Bakas. Um, Councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Bakas, for that uh helpful reminder. Um, this this may be a question more for Harry. Um, but but can you just give us a really quick um explanation of uh what what happens i- if I got a ticket? Um, I I should say if Larry Brown got a ticket. Um, and uh where would that go and where would he go? And and then what happens if 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 he or me didn't pay our ticket? What would happen next?
Um, so you'd get your your infraction mailed to you with instructions on how to respond. And and it's just like any other ticket, an officer hands you, you have, you know, your options of paying or or asking for a hearing and and what happens at the hearing depends on what kind of hearing you request and and so on. Um, but if a fine is assessed either because you um are found, it it's found to be committed by the court or uh, you know, you don't respond or something. Uh, and it's committed by default, then it it's assessed by the court and it's, you know, you're doing payable within uh the time period set by the court. Um, that that can vary depending upon if the person responds or not. If they respond, they can work out, you know, payment arrangements with the court, like a payment plan, that type of thing. But it becomes too unpayable. And then I the court has a collections service that they use to collect, you know, you know, debts and judgments and things like that that the city's not directly involved in. So so the courts, we have our operations agreement with the court that handles collections uh for us. And so it's collected just like any other infraction, uh fine. Um, it it the one thing that's different about it is that it's treated like a parking ticket. And so that's the only consequence is the debt. It does not get reported to the Department of Licensing. It does not affect insurance. Insurance companies can't find it uh when they check your driving record, which is a a lot for a lot of folks. That's the biggest, that's they'll pay the fine. They just don't want to have to pay more in insurance. So that's a, you know, a big difference there. But uh as far as the fines to impose, the process is very similar.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, that that really helps clarify it. So it doesn't like convert at some point into a criminal process?
No, it's a parking ticket.
Thank you.
No.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, this question comes back to the question of overhead. So I'm looking at the chart that had been provided with the estimate for the two cameras. And in year one, uh with the twenty-five percent coverage for overhead, we're looking already at fifty thousand dollars, uh which we're saying we would use officer overtime to to manage those infractions. If we're, you know, looking even at a conservative ten cameras, that number gets significantly big significantly quickly. Um, is there any reason that we're not looking at a dedicated officer for that to get a better, hate to say, return on investment? But overtime is expensive.
Um, so I might defer to Police Chief Collier, who I think is on the call as well, if he wants to answer any of this. But I, you know, it depends upon how many infractions are actually issued as to the amount of time and and effort for the police staff to do. I want to say that in the original program, I think in the first few years of the program, we were issuing over fourteen thousand tickets in a year. Uh, and it wasn't necessarily generating a need for them additional staff to to do that additional work. Um, it's certainly something that if we if we were issuing a significant number of tickets that might come into play in future years, that we might need to look at that. But I think the amount that we are keeping off of that ticket amount, so it's a two hundred dollar ticket that gets issued, we're keeping twenty-five percent of that. So we're keeping fifty dollars of that ticket issuance to cover the court costs, the staff costs for PD, any of the processing costs that we need to do. And as Cecile said, that's a pretty conservative number uh that we came to as we looked at what are all those costs associated with the process to issue that one ticket and to collect the fees on that one ticket. Um, so I think we have a a good conservative number in there for what that administrative cost is for the city. Uh, but again, I don't know if Chief Collier wants to add anything to that.
No, I didn't have anything additional to add. We absorbed it through our uh normal staffing uh prior when we had these in effect. And so the i- it's just a matter of overtime if they couldn't get it done during their normal duty shift.
Any other questions? Counsel. If not, um Cecile, thank you very much. Uh, Director Gao, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to our next agenda, which is the legislative update, which is going to be headed by Director Hindman.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this is not as exciting as photo enforcement, but I I'd like to think I'm a close second uh with our legislative update. So I do have just a few slides to go through. I have a few bills I would like to share with you that we've taken positions on or taken action on. And kind of let you know where we go from here. So I will just pull up my screen here real quick. And hopefully, is everyone seeing the slideshow? Or the slides? There's a thumbs up. Thank you. Um, all right, so uh we are well into the session. Uh, we are uh moving actually nearing the end of the session, to tell you the truth. Just a quick reminder, these are the nine legislators that are representing the three voting districts within the city of Auburn uh that we work with throughout the session as well as throughout the year. And I will talk to you a little bit about that later on uh as well. Uh, the session, as a reminder, uh first day was January tenth. This is a short session or a sixty-day session. The session has been held remotely and the last day of the session is coming right up on us in less than a couple of weeks on March tenth. And just to kind of show you where we are, so I showed showed you this calendar last a few weeks ago. And you see here that we have another deadline coming up uh this week. So uh just as I told you before, there's many things I may be telling you today that may be completely false uh after March fourth, when we hit the the second and the the last cutoff period for the legislature to move bills out of opposite house. Quick reminder of the process. Um, and it's a it just runs circular actually in in two different processes. So a bill will be introduced in the House or the Senate. And then it will be referred to a committee for consideration uh to be passed to the Rules Committee. That's considered the first reading. Uh, Rules Committee will consider it for a second reading. And then the third reading happens in the full body. If the full body uh does choose to pass the bill out of the House of Origin, whether it was introduced in the House or the Senate, it will then go to the opposite house and that process will repeat all over again. And if it does pass through, gets through three readings in both houses, then it is sent to the governor to sign into law. So we are at the point of the green tile there on this slide. So this March uh fourth deadline is uh for a bill to pass out of its opposite house to be sent to the governor. There's a couple of exceptions to that, but that's generally where we are. As a reminder, uh the legislative priorities that we set for this year fall into five basic categories. That's public safety, regulatory and land use, public works, transportation and infrastructure, parks and open spaces, and social services. Uh, so what I'd like to do is just kind of talk to you about some of the bills that fall underneath those um those uh five categories. So uh the public safety bills, this has been probably one of the more active topics that we've been working on as we've worked for technical fist fixes uh to the twenty twenty police reform laws that were passed as well as some other things. So now the first one um on the slide there, uh Senate Bill fifty-six sixty-three. Um, I've lifted listed that as kind of a neutral in that what this bill aims to do is to uh help uh create efficiencies on how to deal with the state versus Blake decision. And as a reminder, the Blake decision was passed in twenty twenty-one uh that basically requires the courts to vacate um tens of thousands of drug possession convictions uh as possession in and of itself was deemed unconstitutional. Uh, I would defer to our legal team to explain that in full, but um basically, our concern with that is the number of cases that must be vacated uh from our courts. And we have submitted some uh questions, if you will, uh to one of the bill sponsors who happens to represent Auburn, which is Senator Claire Wilson, who is one of those bill sponsors with some some questions on that. Uh, overall, we support it. It needs to happen. Um, there's there's money and standards put in place for how uh the courts at the the state and local levels must um vacate those those convictions. Uh, Senate Bill fifty-nine nineteen is uh one that we we have supported as well. It is the the only uh bill that actually deals with pursuits and law enforcement detention. Um, this one modifies some of the restrictions on vehicular pursuits and lowers uh the threshold from probable probable cause to reasonable suspicion. Uh, there have been some amendments to that bill that we don't necessarily agree with, but we are pleased that the legislature is taking up that issue uh to make those clarifications for for law enforcement. House Bill twenty thirty-seven uh is also a use of force bill. Um, that one, whoops. Sorry about that. Accidentally went backwards. Um, that bill is um going to my details here. Uh, that also clarifies use of force, but that has to do more with investigative detention or uh what's commonly known as Terry stops and involuntary transfers. Uh, there has been uh some language changes to that bill. That bill is in the Senate right now. Uh, the Senate has introduced an amendment that um we do not agree with that actually creates more confusion and the whole goal is to to uh create less confusion uh and and more firm language in the bills for our officers. So uh we will be uh asking that pretty much the bill be passed as it came out of the House. Uh, that that bill was very carefully worked on by the bill sponsors in the House. And House Bill seventeen twenty-five, uh this is one that the City Council publicly supported for the um uh missing uh indigenous peoples' uh alert system through the Washington State Patrol. That bill did receive executive action today in ways and means, which leads me to believe it will head to a full floor vote soon. So hopefully that will make its way to the governor's desk very quickly. Um, House Bill uh seventeen nineteen and seventeen thirty-five, you'll see that they have an asterix there. Those bills have actually passed both chambers and are on their way to the governor's desk. Uh, seventeen nineteen helped to clarify the caliber confusion uh related to the uh the the caliber of firearms that police officers could use. Unfortunately, that made some non-lethal options like uh rubber bullets and beanbag rounds illegal as well because they use the same caliber. So that language is being clarified. And seventeen thirty-four offers uh some some great clarification for our officers uh for use of force and community caretaking functions, things like involuntary transfers and people in mental distress. And uh, so like I say, those are on their way to the governor's desk and we're very supportive of those bills. The legislature's worked worked very hard um on those reform bills. And then the last one uh under public safety is uh House Bill sixteen twenty. And that offers a grant program to cities to assist with the cost of responding to community needs um like uh heat waves and snow and ice and air quality things from forest fires. And when we're opening up sheltering and 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 places for folks in our community, those things often come with a cost. And uh the legislature is seeing fit to offer a grant program through uh through the state for cities to have those costs reimbursed to care for our community in those events. Um, uh, the regulatory and land use, uh this was, these were hot topics early in the session, uh mostly around House Bill seventeen eighty-two there in the middle of the slide. That was that missing middle. Um, a a bill that was kind of a cookie cutter, one size fits all for all cities, uh requiring density in in any area that allows single-family uh housing. Uh, and we're seeing in uh House Bill sixteen sixty is an accessory dwelling unit bill that is very similar to seventeen eighty-two in that it is um allows density. Um, also anywhere where single-family housing is allowed and can allow up to two accessory dwelling units on a sing on a single lot. And again, that is uh it's just a bad way to do policy in our mind. Uh, again, it's a cookie cutter thing. We support the 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 densities in our city. We support affordable housing, but we do not support the legislature's overreach and um making zoning sizes that do not take the, I guess, the opinion of the cities uh into to play. This this has been troubling policymaking, quite frankly. Uh, if I may speak strongly on that, just simply because the cities have not been had meaningful engagement with the bill sponsors or the governor's office in in writing these bills. And uh we have offered, especially on seventeen eighty-two, we will be reaching out to bill sponsors to help create that meaningful engagement and to hopefully write better policy uh along those lines. And Senate Bill fifty-eight eighteen, this one just kind of recently came onto the radar. One thing um that we typically ask for often is some regulatory relief uh when it comes to our land use and and the regulations that are involved when building happens. And sometimes the legislature creates a new regulation that we must comply with, but uh they do not really offer maybe extended timelines or um uh rewriting other maybe conflicting land use policies, any of those things. So uh overall, we support this particular bill. Um, and it's it can be refined a little bit better as we've sort of taken a look at it, but overall uh we see this kind of thing, kind of a step in the right direction to to help cities and and to help our our land use decisions as as we go forward with our our building actions. In our parks and open spaces, there's been In our parks and open spaces, there's been one bill that we've been following closely. It kind of plods along. And this bill, again, while well-intentioned, we agree that reducing emissions from. Gas-powered machinery should be reduced. This is kind of another example where public agencies would be required to to use tools. That do not produce emissions, so like electric tools, battery-powered tools. Unfortunately, many of those tools or pieces of machinery just don't exist. The original bill offered a punitive tax penalty for for agencies that did use these things, but. Either they don't exist or they're not industrial grade, which we believe would create more waste. Or to have to carry batteries or generators out into the field to recharge. Some of the smaller tools that our Parks Department may use, some of our trimmers and our mowers and same thing with our. Public Works crews and maintenance crews and out on our golf course. So. Again, this was just kind of an example of something that sounds good in theory, but. The reality is many of these things either don't exist or would create bigger park problems than they would solve. So we have opposed that bill. And lastly, under social services, there there's two bills we've been following. House Bill twenty seventy-five establishes service requirements for DSHS. That includes lowering wait times on the telephone, processing applications faster. Not having kind of negative consequence for people that. You know, let's say you're you're waiting on a phone for maybe thirty minutes, forty minutes and over an hour. Your battery dies, you lose the phone call, you have to get back into the queue. Some of those things that have happened. So this bill, the legislature is is asking for DSHS to to improve their services. Because the people that need their services are the people most in need. And unfortunately, Senate Bill fifty-six sixty-two, this was the bill offered up requiring WashDOT to work with communities. To move. People that are camping on public properties like their freeways and the onramps. And to help move them into services, housing and shelter. But unfortunately, this bill has been pretty much stripped of any true service deliverables. WashDOT actually opposed it heavily. And at this point, it's not really a bill that's actually going to require WashDOT to to do anything. And so it looks like we'll have to look for other measures when it comes to. Addressing kind of the the camping and. On that's happening on WashDOT properties right now. And with that, that is the legislation that we've kind of had the highest focus on. And I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Dana. I was wondering, early on, you talked about. A bill that would address the Blake decision or or just a certain part of the Blake decision on on drug possession. One of the requirements that the legislature created in response was that. People who are. You know, observe with with drugs that they get a referral, you know, there's a diversion. Mandatory diversion to a recovery navigator program. That each each regional B's behavioral health BHACO is supposed to set up. And in King County, we've got one for the entire county. And and then at our last mid-meeting, the the director said, we're we're overwhelmed. You know, just setting up the recovery navigator program for for King County, we need money. And that's something that they really would hope to, you know, want the legislature is to put more money into the recovery navigator program. Because anyway, I'm just wondering if there's been any sort of interest from the legislature in in providing more funding. For that, or is that just going to have to wait till next year?
You know, that would be really sad if it did have to wait, but in this particular bill, this bill is primarily focused on. The the local. Offices, well, the state, county and local offices to, it will, it will fund. Personnel and some other things and all of the things that it's going to take to to vacate these these cases. But your point is a good one, which is related to a lot of the things that we talk about in that. For example, in police reform. We all agree that we would love the mental health folks. To come into a lot of the mental health calls, almost all of the mental health calls that our police officers are responding to. But just like you said, what we're hearing, there's just not enough. There's not enough behavioral health workers out there, you know, and what you're talking about. There's not enough. Addiction services or what have you out there to. To deal with the the demand. So I would defer to, I don't know, I do see Harry is still on the call, on what our concern is and. As I I said to to the mayor when I received the the questions from our legal staff and sent it. It's although it was written in my native language, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't understand. A lot. I I do get it in in theory of what they're talking about, but our concern is really amount around. The number of cases that we will be, you know, if you're going to vacate a case and it says you have to go back fifty years. That, you know, just the sheer volume of of what it takes. You know, personnel-wise and money-wise to to vacate those cases is enormous. So I don't know, Harry, if you have anything to add there on the the Blake decision and the concerns?
Well, I've got a few things to add. That that particular bill will put. A lot of. Procedural requirements and and so on upon the cities and Auburn would be included in that to review the various cases. It requires, i- if a case could be vacated, it requires public defense to be appointed to it. And so that would increase costs and and, you know, resources there. But the main legal issue with with the Blake bill that's coming on is it's based on a fundamental. Misinterpretation of state versus Blake. So that bill starts out with the assertion that. State versus Blake invalidated all drug possession cases. And that's not true. It invalidated drug possession cases based on state law. A good number of our cases, drug possession cases that we have were under city ordinance. That did not violate the state versus Blake decision because our ordinance was constitutionally valid by including. A mental state requirement, which is the problem in the state law. And so we should not, from my point of view, we should not be subject to. Requirements that are based on a flawed state law when we did the right thing and passed an ordinance. That required the constitutional mental state. And so I think that's a a big issue with with that bill from from our point of view. Auburn is different than a lot of other localities. We did the right thing in developing a. Legal authority that pass would pass the Constitution and would pass state versus Blake. A lot of other localities didn't. And so I think we should be treated differently. But that's just me.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for that great report, Director Hinman. I wanted to ask you, I was on a transportation call early this morning. And there may be some current concerns that we should have in the. I guess they eliminated a revenue source related to oil exports. And they seem to be backfilling that with local funding for infrastructure. Any comments about that?
Sure. It's it's massively disappointing that the legislature made that choice and and. What Councilmember Brown is referring to is that over the weekend. There, one of the revenue sources for transportation was going to be a tax on. Imported fuel and.
Export.
Exported fuel, thank you. And so some of those people outside of our state complained about that and they didn't like it. So the legislature decided, well, we won't do that. And instead, we will take money from what is called the Public Works Assistance Account. It used to be the Public Works Trust Fund.
Yep.
And that has been a a common. Money pot that they have taken money from when they have gaps in their transportation funding. And it literally is the only sort of state source of state funding for local projects. So. We will be submitting our deep regret to to the legislature and to the. The chairs of the transportation bill that they have made that choice. And we've, yes, we are extremely disappointed that they're going after the public works money again.
So is that a done deal as far as you're concerned?
Well, I some of the. Some of the. Theories around the thinking there is that, you know, they're not going to zero out the account. There will still be money there. But that makes it, there it's it's competitive money. And so the cities outside of Seattle, Tacoma and and other larger cities will have a harder time competing for those local dollars. But that there will be a fix coming next session, but. Those words kind of seem empty because they continue to tell us they're going to fix the issue with the Public Works Trust Fund. We're finally going to do it. There have been, there has been movement in that arena. Over the past several years that kind of gave us hope, but this this one's a little bit of a gut punch. That, you know, kind of an eleventh hour, we're going to backfill from this fund our hundred million dollar gap that. They chose not to, you know, tax tax the export, so. You know, we can try.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was curious with the Senate Bill fifty-six sixty-two regarding the right-of-way camping. Did you have more information for what the what arguments were for? You know, not keeping teeth in that? I'm just curious how that got diminished, what the arguments were there.
Uh, there were some arguments around. That sweeping encampments is causes causes more trauma to those living there. That there's. There is not enough services for those that need the help. And there may be some some truth in that argument. But we were greatly disappointed. That there was such pushback from WashDOT specifically because that has been a major source of contention. In in most cities and and driving up and down the freeway is that. You know, there is jurisdictional lines and there's boundaries that where people can and can't do something, even. You know, within our own city boundaries, like you heard from Kante. You know, we have property that's owned by King County. We have property that's owned by the Port of Seattle. We have property. You know, that's just outside our city boundaries. That's King County property and. You know, you need those agreements in place if you're going to address the issues on that property, whatever they may be. And in this case. Cities have been asking, begging WashDOT to partner and. Write some MOUs, do something so we can enforce something on, you know, an on-ramp as people drive into our city, they're on an on-ramp. And there's these things there. Well, that's WashDOT property. And when people are telling us, hey, we would like you to do something and we would say, yes, we would too, but that's WashDOT property and. And so that's kind of where it sat. I I can't really, you know, I just I just know what the public comments were from WashDOT. And, you know, there was just, I don't know, I I'm sure there's a capacity issue there, but. The fact that. What's that?
Sorry, I was just mainly curious if it was coming from a standpoint of. They didn't feel they had resources for that or I don't know. Let's just.
That was part of the argument, but you know, in those areas that are very close to the cities. I mean, we know that a lot of our neighbors are willing to partner with WashDOT. You know, with maybe a memorandum of understanding saying, look, we have services in our city. This on-ramp is just, it's right here. We have a shelter right over there. You know, we can do these things, but unfortunately.
No go.
No go. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I was just gonna. That's fine.
Director Hinman, I have. A couple of questions. My question has to do with the use of force. Now. Is there going to be? Is they, are they going to work on clarifying the verbiage? On the use of forces, because I know the last time they did not.
Yes, and I'll, I do I see, yes, Chief Collier is still on the phone as well, so I would love for him to chime in. But a lot of the the confusing language, conflicting language. Has been clarified in these bills for the most part. And there was a lot of confusion around. Use of force, let's say for an involuntary transfer where there's someone who's been deemed. You know, a danger to themselves and others, they need to be transferred to a facility. Officers, after the bills were passed last year, did not feel comfortable. Using any type of force, laying hands on somebody that was in mental distress. Because it could result in some, you know. It could mean their job. And so those things have been clarified. The clarification around Terry stops or investigative, you know, if you ask someone, I need you to stay here, I have some questions for you. And if that person chooses to flee. Last year, they are officers could not pursue that person, nor could they use force to. Have someone stay at the scene of a crime to. You know, talk to them about whatever has been going on. So it does appear. And Chief, I will let you kind of weigh in on on the specific that a lot of those those technical fixes that. That we had asked for have have happened.
Yeah, just to clarify, both Senate Bill fifty-nine one-nine and House Bill twenty thirty-seven both contain clarifying languages. They're both passed out of their respective houses and they're both under consideration in. The adjoining house, but neither one of them has passed out yet. So those are two we're watching. Very closely in the police department because it does, both of them provide clarification on the definitions of force. What constitutes physical force, but neither has been sent to the governor yet. So we're we're still waiting on those.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just last comment was that I was really glad to see the positive sign with House Bill. Twenty seventy-five for improving the service delivery times for Health and Human Services. I remember Kent had specifically called out that some of the challenge he runs into when he's out in the field trying to help. Folks in Auburn is that he actually has to keep two cell phones, one because. You know, he'll be on hold for so long with those departments trying to get aid and trying to get things filled out for. Folks that we're trying to give aid to. So really excited to see that happening at the state level. I think that'll help our program considerably. So that was awesome. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, yeah, I just wanted to. Say something about the the bill that sort of clarifies the, you know, the amount of. the build-up sort of clarifies the, uh, you know, the amount of force that, that police can use when they're, they're, they're trying to assist with a involuntary commitment. And, um, you know, I, 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 I can tell you from personal experience that that, um, you know, that, that language that, that was in the law, the law that passed last year did, uh, you know, it, it did have a pretty strong effect. And, um, I, I, I could see that, uh, our, our officers were really wrestling with that. Um, but I also wanted to report that, um, you know, what I also observed from our officers is that, um, in, in a very specific instance, they, they, they worked really hard to do everything they could to help a person who needed help and get them to um, a hospital where they could get, um, some of the care they needed. So I, I, um, you know, it, it, it wasn't a case where, you, you know, it's been reported, okay, someone just threw up their hands and said, we can't do anything. That, that's not at all what I observed from, um, all our police officers. So I, I just wanted to, um, um, let, let you all know that, uh, very, um, very grateful to you, um, our police department for going the extra mile.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Sterns, and that does mean a lot. It really does. Thank you.
Uh, Director, uh, uh, Councilmember Chapman.
Oh, you could have asked your question, Deputy.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Dana, now that those, uh, bills, some of those ones that you've mentioned have passed, the next step is they go to the governor for signing or what's the next step?
Yeah, that is the next step. So all of the bills that I spoke about, with the exception of one, which is, uh, seventeen, uh, twenty-five, I've kind of blanked it from my memory. Uh, seventeen-eighty-two, I'm sorry, the missing middle one. Uh, that one did not pass out of its house of origin. Uh, but every other bill that I, uh, spoke to, uh, is still being considered in, uh, in its opposite house. And, uh, so if it does pass out of that opposite house, the next step is for it to go to the governor for signature.
And then those will take effect, uh, immediately after he signs them or is
Uh, depends on the bill. Some, some bills take effect ninety days after signing. Some bills are classified as, um, I forget the, the term off the top of my head, emergency something. Some do take effect immediately. Uh, some take effect ninety days after signing.
Okay. Thank you. And what a great report. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Director Hinman, I've got one other question, and that has to do with the, uh, middle housing. Now, uh, is, I, I know, uh, the cities are not happy with that, but is it still going through the motions on that?
No, that one, uh, that one did not make it out of its house of origin, so it is considered dead.
Dead, okay.
Such a terrible term, but we do know that a version of that bill will be revived next session. So we are going to be doing some outreach and some of our staff, uh, Director Tate and some other folks, uh, will be doing some outreach along with other cities to hopefully get some engagement and, and help craft a bill that, you know, like, like a lot of things, we agree with in theory, but doing it this way is just not a good way to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director Hinman. That was a good report.
Thank you.
Um, Council, shall we take a, a quick break before we go to the next, uh, subject matter? Let's do, uh, a five-minute break. Let's come back at, uh, seven-fifty. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
And the purpose of our presentations are to provide high-level overviews of economic development activities, uh, strategies, efforts, uh, and things of that nature in Auburn. Uh, it's also worth noting, um, that not only is Jen new to the city and the role of Economic Development Manager, but I'd also say that, um, uh, there are a number of other changes that have occurred in the world of economic development in Auburn uh, over the last nine months. Uh, first of all, uh, Ekdev functions moved over into community development uh, last year. Uh, recall that Doug Lean retired, uh, his retirement was on April first, and that's when the economic development functions moved into community development. Uh, additionally, Josh Art accepted a different position in the city. So what this means is that, uh, while Jen's new, uh, so am I, uh, new to economic development at least. And, uh, earlier this year, we filled a position previously held by Josh uh, with a new Economic Development Officer, and his name's, uh, Abed Ramit-Ramani. Um, so we're, uh, we are all new as a team, um, but energetic and excited to do the work. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Jen.
Thank you. Thank you for not seeing how many years ago it was that I worked for the City of Auburn. I feel like that ages me pretty quickly. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with everyone. Does that, does that work? Okay, perfect. All right, um, as Jeff said, my name is Jen Francis and I'm the Economic Development Manager. Um, thank you to the Deputy Mayor, um, Council and Mayor for allowing me to attend today and share a little bit about the Economic Development Division of the Community Development Department. Um, this is the first, as Jeff said, in a five-part series about economic development. And today I'll be providing a PowerPoint presentation that is an introduction to economic development. And I respectfully request that you, um, hold your questions to the end. Here we go. The Economic Development Division reports to the Community Development Director, Jeff Tate, and then there's myself as the Economic Development Manager. And then, um, as Jeff mentioned, our newest hire, the Economic Development Coordinator, Abed Ramani. Economic Development works closely with the businesses downtown. Our partners downtown are the Downtown Auburn Cooperative, the DAC, and the Business Improvement Area Board, known as the BIA. We are also involved in tourism and marketing for the City of Auburn, and our partners in tourism are the Auburn Area Collective Chamber and the Lodging and Tourism Advisory Committee. Throughout my presentation, I will not be reading every slide that, um, that we go through, but I do feel it's important to read through this one. And it's the Economic Development Vision Statement, and we feel it's very important. Um, so I'll read through that. Auburn is a community that has a robust and diverse economy where businesses seek to locate people, desire to visit, and residents enjoy a range of commercial offerings. Businesses that locate in Auburn find it easy to enter the marketplace, encounter ideal conditions for their long-term success, and become rooted and involved in the community. Visitors continue to return to Auburn because of its high-quality natural resources, parks, public spaces, commercial attractions. And residents choose to live in Auburn because of the diverse family wage employment opportunities and access to entertainment, restaurants, retail, and services. Now, how do we get there? The economic development element of the city's comprehensive plan is where we form our thoughts about business, economic development, and how to enhance the experience that people have when they live, work, or stay, um, and shop in our community. These are the core values for the Economic Development Department, um, character, wellness, service, economy, celebration, environment, and sustainability. And we'll go through all of those as they, um, reflect, uh, economic development. For character, we have a community that has diversity, and we want to see that thrive. Our council members are diverse and reflective of the members in our community, which gives us a diverse voice while collaborating, collaborating to grow our economic base. Uh, wellness is our community, wellness in our community has been a topic of conversation, a, a topic of conversation, especially lately. There is a concern about homelessness and crime in our city. Our goal remains to have a safe, uh, community and thriving commercial areas. This here is a picture of the track apartments located downtown with easy access to the commuter trains, shopping, and restaurants. Service. It's critical that we retain the existing businesses in our, in our city. We want to help them be successful. We also want to recruit new businesses for services that, that diversify and appeal to residents, visitors, and people that work here in Auburn. Celebration. Ribbon cuttings, grand openings, business anniversaries are all reasons to celebrate in economic development. These events are coordinated with the Chamber and the Executive Office. It's important to promote our businesses to attract visitors and new customers from outside of the city. The economy. The businesses in Auburn help to make our economy flourish. Creating family wage jobs here in Auburn grows our economic base. Encouraging those companies that pay those salaries are, to locate within the City of Auburn is a win for the city and the residents who live and work here. Environment. Our city has numerous parks and natural environments that are important to our citizens of Auburn. Protecting these resources is necessary to enhance the outdoor experiences of our visitors and our residents. We have areas that are very special to our region and entice new businesses to locate in Auburn. And sustainability. Our desire is for residents to, of Auburn to have multiple choices of where to grocery shop, where to eat, and where to go for entertainment. We also want to draw people from other cities to come and shop and eat and play in Auburn. The ten-year economic development strategy plan was adopted in twenty-fifteen and updated in twenty-eighteen. Obviously, this was pre-pandemic. We are looking to update this plan, even though we're in the middle of, of the ten years. A lot has changed since these goals were set, and we're excited to prepare a new plan when the time comes. Our strategic plan highlights, we are always looking to help new developers and businesses invest in our downtown. We have a strong partnership with the Auburn Area Connect, including marketing and contract, a marketing contract and a tourism contract. We work closely with the DAC and the BIA to focus on improvements in the downtown area. Our marketing includes social media, um, promotion of events, updating the event calendar, and promoting, uh, the BIA and DAC events. This is a contract that we have with the Auburn Area Connect, um, Chamber, um, and we'll talk more about how they're going to be helping us, um, later in this. And also, um, they will be coming to speak. The city has a contract with the Outlet Collection for a marketing campaign near the, near the Fieldhouse USA entrance. Fieldhouse USA has approximately one point six million visitors per year. This campaign is to encourage those tourists to, uh, to visit our restaurants and shop, um, and to shop where there are local, uh, where they are located outside the
Does that, does that work? Okay, perfect. Alright, um. As Jeff said, my name is Jen Francis and I'm the Economic Development Manager. Um, thank you to the Deputy Mayor, um Council and Mayor for allowing me to attend today and share a little bit about the Economic Development Division of the Community Development Department. Um, this is the first, as Jeff said, in a five-part series about economic development. And today I'll be providing a PowerPoint presentation that is an introduction to economic development. And I respectfully request that you um hold your questions to the end. Here we go. The Economic Development Division reports to the Community Development Director Jeff Tate. And then there's myself as the Economic Development Manager. And then um, as Jeff mentioned, our newest hire, the Economic Development Coordinator, Abed Ramani. Economic Development works closely with the businesses downtown. Our partners downtown are the Downtown Auburn Cooperative, the DAC, and the Business Improvement Area Board, known as the BIA. We are also involved in tourism and marketing for the City of Auburn, and our partners in tourism are the Auburn Area Collective Chamber and the Lodging and Tourism Advisory Committee. Throughout my presentation, I will not be reading every slide that um that we go through, but I do feel it's important to read through this one. And it's the Economic Development Vision Statement, and we feel it's very important. Um, so I'll read through that. Auburn is a community that has a robust and diverse economy where businesses seek to locate people, desire to visit, and residents enjoy a range of commercial offerings. Businesses that locate in Auburn find it easy to enter the marketplace, encounter ideal conditions for their long-term success, and become rooted and involved in the community. Visitors continue to return to Auburn because of its high-quality natural resources, parks, public spaces, commercial attractions. And residents choose to live in Auburn because of the diverse family wage employment opportunities and access to entertainment, restaurants, retail and services. Now, how do we get there? The economic development element of the city's comprehensive plan is where we form our thoughts about business, economic development, and how to enhance the experience that people have when they live, work, or stay um and shop in our community. These are the core values for the Economic Development Department. Um, character, wellness, service, economy, celebration, environment and sustainability. And we'll go through all of those as they um reflect uh economic development. For character, we have a community that has diversity, and we want to see that thrive. Our council members are diverse and reflective of the members in our community, which gives us a diverse voice while collaborating, collaborating to grow our economic base. Uh Wellness is our community, wellness in our community has been a topic of conversation, a, a, a topic of conversation, especially lately. There is a concern about homelessness and crime in our city. Our goal remains to have a safe uh community and thriving commercial areas. This here is a picture of the track apartments located downtown with easy access to the commuter trains, shopping and restaurants. Service. It's critical that we retain the existing businesses in our, in our city. We want to help them be successful. We also want to recruit new businesses for services that it, that diversify and appeal to residents, visitors and people that work here in Auburn. Celebration. Ribbon cuttings, grand openings, business anniversaries are all reasons to celebrate in economic development. These events are coordinated with the Chamber and the Executive Office. It's important to promote our businesses to attract visitors and new customers from outside of the city. The economy. The businesses in Auburn help to make our economy flourish. Creating family wage jobs here in Auburn grows our economic base. Encouraging those companies that pay those salaries are to locate within the City of Auburn is a win for the city and the residents who live and work here. Environment. Our city has numerous parks and natural environments that are important to our citizens of Auburn. Protecting these resources is necessary to enhance the outdoor experiences of our visitors and our residents. We have areas that are very special to our region and entice new businesses to locate in Auburn. And sustainability. Our desire is for residents to, of Auburn to have multiple choices of where to grocery shop, where to eat, and where to go for entertainment. We also want to draw people from other cities to come and shop and eat and play in Auburn. The ten-year economic development strategy plan was adopted in two thousand fifteen and updated in two thousand eighteen. Obviously, this was pre-pandemic. We are looking to update this plan, even though we're in the middle of, of the ten years. A lot has changed since these goals were set, and we're excited to prepare a new plan when the time comes. Our strategic plan highlights. We are always looking to help new developers and businesses invest in our downtown. We have a strong partnership with the Auburn Area Connect, including marketing and contract, a marketing contract and a tourism contract. We work closely with the DAC and the BIA to focus on improvements in the downtown area. Our marketing includes social media, um promotion of events, updating the event calendar and promoting uh the BIA and DAC events. This is a contract that we have with the Auburn Area Connect um Chamber. Um, and we'll talk more about how they're going to be helping us um later in this. And also, um, they will be coming to speak. The city has a contract with the Outlet Collection for a marketing campaign near the, near the Fieldhouse USA entrance. Fieldhouse USA has approximately one point six million visitors per year. This campaign is to encourage those tourists to uh to visit our restaurants and shop um and to shop where there are local, uh where they are located outside the mall while they spend time in Auburn. The Economic Development Division has been working with the Multimedia Division to take pictures of um multiple rest- restaurants, businesses, hotels and shops to be included in this campaign. We are hopeful for the installation to happen in the very near future. Tourism. To qualify for tourism, people must come from, come to Auburn from at least fifty miles away or more. The city benefits in many ways economically from tourism. Tourists coming from all around to Auburn helps businesses when they spend money at their, at their shops and eat at their restaurants. And staying in Auburn hotels has yet another benefit. The lodging tax is collected at eight hotels and motels in the City of Auburn. The Lodging and Tourism Advisory Committee, Lodging, Lodging Tax and Tax Advisory Committee establishes a budget and awards grant. And the Auburn Tourism Board works to resolve issues that are tourism-related. The contract with Auburn Area Connect benefits the city with managing the event calendar and developing those digital assets, updating Explore Auburn website, posting on social media platform and much more. Promoting our hotels and motels in Auburn. When hotels are full, when hotels are full, businesses win. The no vacancy sign means restaurants will have more diners, stores will have more customers, and lodging taxes are collected. The DAC prepared the Destination Auburn QR Campaign Cards to be placed at hotels and businesses. And the QR code will list specials for most businesses wanting to participate. This will help promote even more local companies. The Auburn Area Collective is our partner in, in marketing and in tourism. They will be, they are currently updating our social media page and planning on a, a business and hiring expo, a career fair, um offering education opportunities for businesses. Uh, they also work in promoting events via social media, updating the event calendar and promoting um BIA and DAC events. Um, and then trade shows for Destination Auburn and to promote our Destination Auburn brand. Supporting our businesses. The Auburn Area Collective is working with the city legislatures and community. There'll be several events that the Auburn Area Collective is involved with, um from legislative breakfast to career fairs um and the Welcome Home Magazine. Networking. The pandemic caused the stop of the three no network platform. The city worked with the Auburn Area Collective to rebrand the gatherings. We now have Business Connect events on the first Wednesday of every month from three until five P M. These events just started up in January of two thousand twenty-two and have been well-received by the business community. Our first event was at Dave and Buster's in February. We held it at uh Return Home and in March Cafe Pacific. This is a great opportunity for businesses to find one another at an informal gathering. And at each event, there's at least one game and plenty of prizes. The Business Improvement Area, also known as the BIA. It's a specific uh area that's illustrated on this map. The district has approximately two hundred and forty businesses, and the BIA Board is made up of seven business and commercial property owners. The purpose of the board is to aid in economic development and neighborhood revitalization. As a reminder, about six months ago, council removed the BIA rate, and now the BIA receives funding from the B and O tax. So how can the BIA funding be spent? Funds may be spent on parking facilities, decorations, sponsorships of public events, provide maintenance and security for common public areas, and provide transportation for the benefit of the area. The BIA funded a portion of the cleanup crew for the downtown. The Downtown Auburn Cooperative, or the DAC, Economic Development works closely with the Downtown Auburn Cooperative. Their executive officer is Cheryl Rakes. Uh Christina Dryson is the president and Jen Reed from the Little Nitty is vice president. They have a thirteen-member board. The DAC was recently restructured uh from the old Auburn Downtown Association. They have a new name and a new set of goals. Uh, the DAC plans events to benefit the businesses in the BIA area. These events include pub crawls, craft fairs, uh beer and gar- the beer, uh Beer Gardens. They coordinate several events during the holidays such as the seniors giving wreaths, Santa House and holiday pictures. During the pandemic, uh they provided meals to multi-carrier hospital employees um that they obtained from local restaurants. Um, keeping the downtown clean is a priority for us in economic development. These are two of our members of our Auburn Sparkle Crew. We have partnered with Trillian to find great people who try and keep up with cleaning the BIA several times a week. The downtown lighting project. This project is in the middle of coming to fruition. The electrical outlets had to be upgraded in the B Street Plaza and the mural parking lot next to the Classic Farmhouse on Main Street. You'll see here on this map, um last week, all of the lights have been strung on trees numbered one through twelve. Uh, currently, there is a small electrical issue being worked out um on the outlets in the B Street Plaza, but all of the trees in the mural parking lot are all lit up. The contractor installed them in approximately four days, and we look forward to the rest of the project being completed in March. ARPA funds. You may recall in two thousand twenty-one, council decided that the CARES Fund um was to provide those businesses most in need and ever hardest hit to receive a one-time economic stimulus payment. With the ARPA funds, council chose to provide uh five hundred thousand dollars for the Economic Development Division. With this funding, we are seeking more input from businesses. A survey went out over a little, a little over a week ago to ask businesses how they feel it would be best to spend those funds and to, to benefit our business community. We asked specific questions about marketing, special events, technology, and additional COVID supplies such as P P E or testing kits. There have been fifty-seven responses so far, and we're anxious to receive those results. Lastly, our economic development goal is that our program should shape the character of the City of Auburn's future economy. As a reminder, this is the first of a five, of five presentations that the Economic Development Division will be bringing to the council over the next year. We look forward to sharing more information about what we are doing in the coming months. Again, thank you for having me this evening, and do you have any questions that I could answer? Commissioner Brown has raised his hand.
Yeah, um. Okay to go there Deputy Mayor?
Commissioner Baggett, you're muted.
Or, yeah, sorry. That's the reason. Communication with me is job two today. Uh, Council Member Baldwin, please.
Okay. I'll go, uh, thank you for the wonderful presentation, uh Jen, and thank you for joining us here in the city. Uh, excited to have you on board. Um, the one question I have that I don't think was covered in here is um I do hear from folks sometimes about the number of open storefronts that we have. Um, when folks are looking to start a business uh within Auburn, I feel like we've got a couple of different resources, but do we have anything where if someone were looking to come and start a business, where we keep or maintain any sort of rolling list of, you know, here are open, you know, locations or retailer, uh help connect people to those commercial spaces, I think.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. Uh, we do have um the ability to check on CoStar, which is kind of like your Redfin, um but for commercial properties. Um, and we enjoy connecting um people that are starting new businesses with locations that are existing. Um, it sounds like there's a couple of um new um tenants that will be moving onto Main Street and hopefully filling up um Sample Shoe Shop and the um tenant that was next door to that that was also vacant. We're hoping to see those get filled here in the next month or two.
To your question, the Council Member Baldwin?
Um, I probably have follow-ups, but I'll just shoot you an email.
Okay.
Thanks.
Council Member Brown?
Thank you very much, uh Chair Baggett. Uh, my question has to do with, you know, I see a lot of the plan here is focused on retail, tourism. Uh, what uh, what are we looking at for, you know, economic development in terms of manufacturing, for example? Uh, is that an area that you plan to look at to concentrate on?
Yeah, um luckily, we're partnered up with the Greater Seattle Partners, um which is a, a local um avenue for us to get information and requests. And typically, those are industrial and warehouse um type situations that they're looking for. Um, it, sometimes we see two or three requests um from them looking to uh locate one of their businesses um in our area. Sometimes we just don't meet the, the fit, and, and we don't have a property that's for sale or for lease that matches up with what they want. Um, but we certainly do have those connections um that, that we get uh really weekly, um if, if not several times a week.
I'm very interested in the subject, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Council Member Trout Manuel?
Thank you, uh Chair Baggett. Uh, my question is, well, thank you first of all for a great presentation. And, and it's nice to finally get to meet you. Um, my question is the B and B, BIA. Um, when they have those activities, are they going to send out invitations to us council members to attend? Uh, we used to attend to ribbon cuttings and all those events, but COVID hit, and uh nothing has happened, so it'd be nice for us to start being able to attend these activities. So I was just wondering, when are these um activities going to start up?
So the um networking events um started in January of two thousand twenty-two. Um, but we can reach out to the Executive Office and make sure that um you're also notified for the ribbon cutting um to, to make sure that you feel involved in the business community. Um, I'm sure that would be much appreciated by those businesses.
It would be nice, because I know I hear from them that uh us council members don't seem to care. We do care, so it'd be nice to get invited. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor? James?
Thank you Chair Baggett. Um, Jen, it's good seeing you again.
Yes.
Uh, thank you for the great presentation. Um, I do have one question, kind of caught my ear a little bit uh on the benefits of tourism. And you said the tourist must be from fifty miles away. Why can't it be from Kent, or why can't it be from Covington or some, you know, somewhere nearby?
So fifty miles is the threshold for um someone who's visiting to be considered a tourist. Otherwise, they're a, a neighboring resident. Um, and it doesn't count towards the tourism dollars. Um, it doesn't trigger a, a, a tourism catch um when they're, when they live in the area and they're, they're close enough by to, to count as actual tourism. Those are just fantastic customers that we're getting from another city.
One thing that I'd add to that is that um in order for a city to collect a lodging tax, it is a requirement under state law that uh that that lodging tax then be used to market uh to people beyond a fifty-mile radius. So it's rooted in state law as well as what Jen had just indicated, um in order to be eligible to even impose a lodging tax within a community.
So that, let me ask a follow-up. Um, then um say for instance, somebody from C-TAC comes over and stays in, in lodging over here, and uh we still tax them, right? Okay. Alright.
Yeah, it doesn't change the taxing, um you know, I mean clearly, well, there's people that, like say someone, um, you know, the folks who were um uh, uh had to be removed from an apartment due to a fire. I mean, those folks go into a hotel that's local, so the tax still gets collected, the
Okay.
hoteliers still benefit and everything like that, but our marketing strategies around tourism need to to seek beyond that fifty-mile radius.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Jen.
Thank you.
Council Member Stern?
Um, thank, thank you Chair Baggett. Um, thank you, Jen. That was really, um, really good. Yeah, I was wondering, um, where, where in the sort of overall plan or strategy, um, does the, the, do our neighbors, the Muckleshoot Tribe fit in? Um, you know, for instance, they, they have one of the largest casinos in the entire Northwest and I mean, there's going to be a, a huge hotel there. So I mean, it's, it's, and, and they're one of the largest employers in, in the region, so I'm just sort of wondering what, what, um, what your thoughts are.
Absolutely. I think that the Muckleshoot Tribe um plays a big part in our tourism. Um, and that is because you, we have a, a racetrack, a casino, um, a hotel, um, multiple restaurants. And so I think that that's um very important and in our tourism portion and our marketing. Um, and so w- we do consider the tribe um a, also, you know, a, a partner in that. Although we may not list them and identify them as partners in, in, in the, the presentation, we're very aware of the, um, of the people that um are getting drawn in um d- due to activities and entertainment that is um within the tribe land.
Well, and it's important to note that the hotel that will be there in the future will not be collecting the, the lodging tax uh because um of you know, just how government boundaries overlap or political boundaries overlap, so we do, uh, we do partner, we have to, uh, you know, it, we are a community. Um, and we benefit from partnering, but we also have some limitations on uh again, how we use lodging taxes, because they're really intended to be uh taxes that benefit um uh the hotels, because that's what you're really trying to do, is put people into hotel beds. The assumption is, once you put the folks into those bedrooms, they're going to spend money in all sorts of other areas of our economy. Um, and that's a good thing for the, the uh, the tribe as well, uh, so the relationship's important. But we do have a, a dividing line or a, a boundary, I guess, in terms of how we uh manage uh the funds and how we uh conduct our marketing strategies.
Mayor Bacchus?
Thank you Chair, just a couple of that's what happens when there's two of us in the room. Soon we'll all be back together and we won't have these screens. Couple of things, uh first, invitations for ribbon cuttings and things come through our office and Antoinette will inform you and invite you to those events. That's not something that Jen needs to, to focus on. Those, those come in and we send them out to you, but we also have to make sure that there's a balance so that we're not having um a quorum in, for some events, because we don't want to violate any of the Open Public Meeting Act laws in case there is business being discussed. So we, we try to balance that. And there have not been very many ribbon cuttings in the last couple of years, so you would not have received more than maybe uh one or two invitations in the last couple of years for a ribbon cutting. So there, hopefully, after March eleventh or twelfth, there will be many more business opportunities for you to be out in the community and celebrate the successes and the openings of new businesses.
Very well put. Uh, thank you, Mayor Bacchus. Uh, I have a, a couple of questions that uh may, may have to be answered by Jeff, but certainly Jen can chime in if she knows about these things. We've been, uh, we've suffered from a couple of bad fires here over the years. And we do have a lot of properties, some are relatively new, uh uh areas that probably have not really been determined yet, but I, I was just kind of curious of the status of the, uh, the, the Heritage Building uh fire that uh currently still looks like a hole in the ground over there. And, and I was wondering if we had any status on that and the results of the, uh, the newer fire there along Main Street.
Yeah, I can jump in on, uh, first of all, on the heritage. Um, so So great news, last week, all of the final sets of plans for the Heritage Building or the replacement, which is going to be called Divine Court, have been gotten to the finish line and approvals. So the property owner, Malina, well, she's already engaged a contractor, so she has someone on board to initiate that work. The next step is going to be a phase we go into called pre-construction conversations with the property owner and the contractor. We need to take care of logistics, like where to construction workers park. We need to take care of logistics of where are the staging locations for equipment and materials as they show up and things of that nature. So the good news is, all those plans are reviewed and approved, have made it through the process. She's intent on starting that project April. So we're very, very, very close to that and seeing that a changeover at that piece of property. So that's really encouraging and exciting. The other piece of property, the Max House. Probably the most notable thing is that, I think it was about two weeks ago, that on the fence out there went up the for-sale sign. And this is different than like the first fire where the property owner was intent from the very beginning to rebuild and rebuild something bigger and stay in her business of property management. So on the Max House side, the property owner said, that's not what I do. That's not my skill set. I'm good at managing properties. I'm not good at developing properties. So they were very clear in the very beginning to say, once the demo is complete, we're going to list the property. With that said, we don't know who the future owner would be, and we don't know what their intentions would be. We don't know how long it'll take to sell the property. So there's a bunch of big unknowns. We do intend to require on that piece of property one last change before they move on, which is to take that temporary fence down and replace it with something that's more permanent, something that in the world of fencing is a little more attractive, like black vinyl coating instead of galvanized, and something that's not easy to scale. So it's tight mesh, black vinyl instead of, you know, the much more open gaps that people can just climb right over. And they'll have to, they'll be putting some gates in that fencing too, because there'll be needs periodically to go in and maintain weeds that will prop up or access to the building or sites that are adjacent and things of that nature. But that one's harder to predict, because we don't know who will end up buying it.
Yeah, I know you had mentioned that before, that it could take a year or two before we really start seeing any movement in that area. But let's hope for a speedy developer to come in here and help us out. Any other questions for Jen or for Jeff? If not, Deputy Mayor, I will turn the meeting back to you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Council? Do we have any other discussion items? If not, do we have any new business? Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.